School Board meeting for May 9, 2022. For Rock Ridge. The order. All those that are here, or if you're online, you can. We have a booklet over here with the agenda, copies of the meeting. And if you want to access it online, you can go to rrps.org. District information, school board, and board book. And you can follow along with this. At this time, I would like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, at this time, I'll call order. Brandy?
Here.
John?
Here.
Matt?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Polly?
Present.
Bill?
Here.
Nicole?
Here.
Tim is here. Stacy is on her way. Oh, Stacy, are you here?
I said present.
Okay, perfect. All board members are present. At this time, I'll take a motion. At this time, 4.5, the approval higher of Anna Hazelton is to be corrected. And with that correction, if... Looking for a...
I'd like to make a motion to remove 6.2 from the agenda, please.
I'll support that, but I would move to remove 6.3 and 4.5.
I'll support 4.5.
You're gonna take them one at a time?
One at a time.
So our administration has put this in front of us as a budget item, and we've had no discussion on it. Is that the way we're gonna do this? Just asking the question.
Yeah, we've had no discussion on that. It's been at no committee meetings. It's been on the agenda twice with no discussion, so at this time, I'd like to remove 6.2. I'll speak for that one as well, just for that one, I guess.
Okay, so we're gonna look at 6.2. Consider approval of resolution relating to non-renewal of contract of Jeff Carey. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Same sign.
Stace?
I assume this will be discussed at the Budget Committee, being it's budgetary item.
And personnel. Personnel and budget.
Well, we weeks ago approved a budget with reducing our administration. So, and that did go through the Budget Committee, I believe, and personnel. So we'll just keep kicking the can down the road. That was 7 to 2 with Stacy and Tim as no's.
I don't think it's kicking the can down the road. We're just looking for some discussion, and we pulled it off the agenda.
That's what...
More discussion, and we never had any discussion at any committees or at this board table. And I think this should be...
How can you have discussion, Matt, if you pull it off the agenda? And we won't have to talk anymore? It's off the agenda.
We should have discussion before it goes on the agenda, in my opinion.
Tim, can we have a working session?
There you go. I'd support that.
Okay, what was the one you wanted to call off, Paul? Pull off, Polly?
Have we resolved what we're doing with this?
We'll wait, no.
Well, yeah, we pulled...
We passed pulling 6.2.
Yes.
And there was added discussion by Tim and then by you. And then my perspective would be that just tonight, we had a presentation earlier about realigning a budget. And so you can always realign a budget, okay?
No, you said you wanted to poll something, and what is that?
6.3, one at a time, and 4.5, but I'll move to remove 6.3.
We have a motion by Director Sorkin to remove 6.3. Support. Support by John. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to, you know, see discussion on this, and frankly, sooner rather than later. And I don't see any motions here. I mean, the scenarios were out. I think they're included in the board packet, what the Activities Committee considered on Wednesday. And I guess I, personally, I'd like to see some discussion on that tonight.
I like Brandy's idea of working sessions for somebody.
I have no problems if we would combine those two for a working session prior to the next meeting.
I'd support that, so the full board gets, you know, full information.
And I will say that at the Personnel Committee, there was a discussion on the options, and it was decided to bring it to the whole board. So I think as a whole board, then, we should put that in a working session as well.
And there was also some discussion on those options on 6.3 at the Activities Committee. I understand some of that got miscommunicated, if you will, to the Personnel Committee. For the record...
It was clear.
At the Activities Committee, I don't believe it was accurately. For the record, at the Activities Committee, when we talked about these scenarios, two of us voiced our support for one of the scenarios. There was no vote.
Could I just ask, if we're gonna talk about this at a working session, do we have to talk about it right now as well?
Someone brought it up and said that it went to the Personnel Committee. It was not accurately reported. It was not accurately reported after.
Are you...
There was not a vote.
Matt, Matt.
There was not one word. Please!
No, you please. I wanna ask you a question. Were you at the Personnel Committee?
No.
Okay. The people at the Personnel Committee were given wrong information, and they were all contacted by the superintendent and given the correct...
With more wrong information. There was not a vote at the Activities Committee on what scenario we supported. There wasn't one word that we... Against what the two of us, John and I, said we supported at that meeting.
We have discussion in a...
Not one vote.
In a calm manner, please?
So, yeah.
Raise.
I agree.
If people would quit interrupting me, please. There was not a vote.
And you can't vote at meetings anyway, but you can give your...
You can give a recommendation, and a recommendation is on a 2 to 1 vote.
There was not a vote.
Can't vote.
A 2 to 1 case scenario.
Do we wanna check the record? There was not a vote.
Can we...
It's a working session. Let's just leave it at the working session.
Yes, but I'm saying that what was reported to the Personnel Committee was inaccurate.
Is there any other discussion on this? All those, all those who polled 6.3 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
You were a no. So Tom, Stacy, and Tim were a no. And Polly, Bill, you were a...
I was a yes.
A yes, thank you. Brandy, yes. John and Matt, thank you. That'll be polled. Is there any other before we approve amended agenda?
I'd like to pull, like I said, 4.5, also remove that from the agenda to be considered at a later time.
And I supported that motion.
So the motion is to pull it from the consent agenda for discussion tonight?
No, it's just to remove it from the consent agenda. Just like the other two, just to be removed from tonight's meeting.
So we have a motion by Polly. Second by Bill to poll 4.5. Is there any discussion?
I just, I think we really need to look at interviewing, the interviewing process. If we, as a board, if we are in charge of hiring and terminating, I just, I feel like we need to take a look at the interviewing process. Because my understanding is, I was told emails where people were asked to participate in interviewing committees, and I talked to a number of people, and they didn't receive anything. And I wanna make sure that everybody has a fair opportunity to participate in those interviews. So I just wanna make sure that we're doing that. That's important. It's not us that have the education in education. I mean, I do, but, you know, those people are working with people side by side, they're interviewing with the people, and I wanna, I wanna trust that fair recommendations are being made. And if everybody's not given the opportunity to be a part of interviews, I don't know if that's fair. It's not fair.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, my input would be, my reason for pulling it is that I requested information, did not get the specific information, so I don't think I have the information to vote. And if I didn't get that information, the rest of the board members didn't get it either. So...
I would support pulling it for discussion purposes, and hearing what Director Sorkin just said, I'll support the amendment to pull it completely right now.
Well, Bill did.
Yeah, I said Bill seconded it.
Oh, no, yes, but I'm just saying, I understand.
Is there any other discussion?
Would this be put in another working session? Is that what we're talking about, or...
It could be, it should be.
I say just talk about all and about the interviewing process and everything at the same time, as soon as we can, in a working session.
I go for that.
Is there any other discussion?
I'm sorry, I've got one more thing to say. You know, I've mentioned, and this is a little off-topic, and I apologize, but I did mention to Tim about having a retreat for board members to, for multiple reasons. But, you know, I kind of feel like we're getting off task in micromanaging, and I wanna make sure that we're getting back on the right track. We are responsible for hiring and terminating, and, you know, those people that put the time in the interviews, we should be, we should be taking their recommendations. But again, if it's not done fairly, then we, as a board, have a responsibility to make sure that it is.
Very good. All those in favor of polling 4.5 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Tom, Stacy, and Tim, against. And Bill, Polly, Brandy, Matt, and John, to poll. Has been polled. Now, may I? Is there anything else? May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Support.
Motion by Tom, support by Stacy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried unanimously.
We have the consent agenda, just make it an entire agenda.
No, we would be polling things anyway, sir. A recognition of visitors, we have no visitors this evening.
I have a question on that, but we did receive some...
I'd like to finish, please.
Okay.
I had a couple people ask for it. The one, I told her that when I get the information of which she wanted to talk about, that I would get back to her. And that was Brianna Salo.
Was it, first of all, was it an agenda item?
No.
Okay, okay. And you would, okay.
And I told her that I... I don't know what, I'd have to look it up.
But I believe at a previous meeting, it was an agenda item because it was in the payment of the bill, so she was denied it. So I'm just giving you a little background, a little history.
I also asked her for some follow-up information, and I didn't receive it.
Yeah, she sent us your email, too.
I know, and I asked her for specific information. I can't send it to the whole board, because that would be a violation of open...
But she can. But she did give that information in her first request.
It wasn't specific like I asked.
But we got it, so you might not have gone back in your emails to look, like about a month ago. That's all I have to say.
I read my emails, Polly.
And, okay, Tim, and then we had this Bethany, as far as I see, that wasn't on the agenda either. Is that why you denied that one? About the transportation for daycare?
Correct.
Okay, that was not an agenda item. And then Catherine, were any of her concerns agenda items tonight?
No.
All right.
And we've all received Catherine's emails.
Sometimes they are agenda items. Oh, one more thing about Brianna, though. She actually asked to put it on the agenda, so that request was denied, too, by you?
Yes.
Okay. So that...
And I told her that I was gonna get information, and I'd get back to her. So if, if a member of the public can't go by that, and they continue to send emails, I do not answer them. I told her that I would get back when I got the two items she was, wanted to discuss. I got information on them.
But I, you know, you didn't...
That's fine, thank you. We're gonna move on.
One more point, I asked for something to be on the agenda, and I never heard anything back from you either. So, you know, it happens to board members, too, so I just wanted to say that.
Well, Polly, you were at the meeting...
I requested something to be on this agenda, and I didn't even hear back from you, so I'm just saying, it happens to board members also.
You asked about the salutatorian and valedictorian.
I asked for it to be on the agenda, and I didn't even hear back from you.
Discuss that.
And we discussed it, you were present, and you did not say any, you had no questions for...
It's because we couldn't vote on it that night, it wasn't on the agenda, and the board never voted on it. The board never voted on that, and that was my request. So I'm just giving information. Was never a formal vote by the board. So let's move on.
Number four, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
So moved.
Matt and Brandy?
No. Got it.
I got you. You got my good here tonight. Any other discussion?
I do, about the two resignations, it's 4.7 and 4.8. I asked a similar question at the last meeting. When we have a resignation, are we intending to refill those positions, Noel? One is a science teacher secondary, and the other is a study hall supervisor?
We have not gotten that far. At this point, these individuals have resigned.
Okay, do you see the need to replace a secondary science teacher for curriculum? I mean, the kids have registered already for next year, right? And so we should know whether or not we need that science teacher replaced or not.
Well, we haven't been able to balance the budget, so...
At this point, based upon what I'm hearing from the board about interviewing, about positions, I don't believe it is a good idea to talk about that right now.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Yep. Eight yeses, and Polly, no. Thank you. Willie, fundraising.
Thank you for this opportunity tonight. I'm very excited to share some good stories and good information. A special thank you to the Eglith Elks, I talked about it at the last meeting, but now you'll see it officially coming through, for their two donations. One was through that burger bash and ticket sales. We appreciate the Elks doing that for us, and then they punched in the extra $259 to get us up to $7,000. A special thank you to Jen Evenson, Stancie and George Walters, and Paul Chapman, who was the cook, Stancie and George from the Elks, and Jen from their fundraising. That was a great deal that got us. You'll see the anonymous match officially come through at the next meeting. That got us our $10,000 that we raised, and the anonymous $20,000 that came after for a $30,000 total raise for track and field equipment at the new stadium. I decided about that. And now I have an incredible one to share. It's super exciting, so I'm just going to read it. That makes it easier for me, and then I don't forget to say something or get off track, as you know, that can be easy. If a hockey puck comes flying by my head, I can be distracted. Tonight, I have the good fortune to share with you a wonderful commitment from the Waschke family and its dealerships in Virginia. Ken Waschke Auto Plaza and Waschke family Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram. The Waschkes have committed $250,000 to our Rock Ridge Rising campaign to support the enrichment and enhancement of our new campus. This is incredibly, this incredibly generous donation will afford us many opportunities for our students at our new Rock Ridge High School. With 39 years of business, the Waschke family recognizes the importance of exposure to the automotive vocational trade in our high schools. Their commitment to enriching the automotive program in the schools will hopefully bring greater opportunities for area kids with interest and aptitude to that trade. With their donation, the Waschke family also hopes to enhance the community spaces on the Rock Ridge campus. We all envision the Stadium Plaza and Activity Center as a place where the community comes together to celebrate before and after events. To recognize this great donation, we present that Rock Ridge Public Schools, that's what I'm recommending tonight, you'll see the official document next week, the Activity Center in between the gym and the pool be named the Waschke Family Activity Center at Rock Ridge High School. There's a beautiful Stadium Plaza in the renderings. We want that to be named the Waschke Family Stadium Plaza at Rock Ridge High School. And the auto shop, the Waschke Family Automotive Center at Rock Ridge High School. A very, very special thank you to the Waschke family. You'll see the agreement in the next part. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely incredible. The people in our communities are unbelievable, all of them. This entire Rock Ridge Rising campaign has been the most heartwarming and encouraging thing I've been involved with. Thanks.
Thank you, Willie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is.
Thank you, Willie.
How do you follow up that?
Get to get some good news once in a while.
Thank you, Board Chair Reardon, members of the Rock Ridge School Board. Quite a few things have been going on at the Gilbert campus, and quite a few things are coming up here this spring, so I just wanna let you know. Last Monday, our Eglith Gilbert Junior High had their spring music concert, seventh and eighth grade band directed by Kevin Schumall, seventh and eighth grade choir directed by Rita Forsman. A very nice spring performance they had last week, Monday. Last Friday, we had our fifth and sixth graders graduate our DARE program at the Nell Sheen. I wanna thank the Gilbert Police Department, Officer Chelsea Tricatos, for spending the time and teaching our kids all about DARE and what it's all about to be a business. Kids got T-shirts, it was a nice program, and also, at the end of the day, they had cake and pop on Friday, so sugared them up and... Nell Sheen Spring Concert will be this Friday, May 13, at 1:00 at Fryerson Auditorium in Gilbert. There'll be fifth grade classroom music, sixth grade band and choir and orchestra performed. Again, it's this Friday at 1:00 in Gilbert for spring music program for the Nell Sheen. Our annual junior high and Nell Sheen awards programs are coming as well. The Nell Sheen Awards will be at Fryerson Auditorium at 1:10 p.m. of, in Gilbert, excuse me, 1:10 p.m. on Thursday, May 26. That's the Nell Sheen Awards Program. And then the junior high awards program will be at 8:30 a.m. on Friday, May 27. Speaking of May 27, the Nell Sheen Track and Field Day will be taking place that day. That's the last day of school throughout the morning. It's gonna be a great one for all the kids to wrap it up. Last day of school for the Gilbert campus is Friday, May 27, 2022. Students have been attending the old high school and junior high building since 1911. Our Gilbert campus closing ceremony for the public will be held on Thursday, June 2, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. in the auditorium. We'll have several guest speakers, we'll have an excellent program, and it'll be Fryerson Auditorium's final event. So for 111 years, people have been going into that auditorium and filling in for many events, so we hope you can come for the final one. Please join us. Again, Gilbert campus closing ceremony for the public will be at 5:00 on June 2, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Is there gonna be anything, go out in the paper, Todd, in regards to that?
We'll put out some stuff on Facebook, and we'll put something in the paper as well.
Okay, so I had some classmates, you know, that is my alma mater there, classmates. Some people have questioned whether they'll be able to tour the campus around the Fourth of July, when kind of everybody get together. I don't know what's gonna happen there, because...
Speaking of that, on the Fourth of July weekend, there is gonna be a garage sale in Gilbert, so I believe the building will be open prior to the Fourth. I think the Fourth's on Monday, so maybe that Friday, Saturday, prior.
That'd be the only time that it'll be open for tours, to be honest?
I don't know for sure. We could always get you in there if you need to.
Well, it's not me, it's other...
Yeah, there's class reunions and things like that. And if someone wants to take a tour anytime, you know, prior to, you know, just give them a call.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thanks.
Thank you, Todd. Gina, 5.3. Elementary school preliminary enrollment staffing.
Good evening, board members and Chair Sorkin Reardon. I am here tonight to explain to you, you like that, Polly. I'm here to explain to you kind of the process we took to get to the numbers that you see in front of you. This is the green sheet that I gave out today. If you got one prior, it's because I gave you a new one because it changed minute by minute. Hence the reason you got a green sheet from me this evening. The first thing I'd like to point out, too, is that to get these numbers, we first sent out an online form. We know as administration, we knew as the tech department, we knew as secretaries, that going to online enrollment this year was gonna be a huge jump for many of our families. We knew it was gonna have its hiccups, it was gonna have lots of hiccups, and it's been a lot of hiccups. I'll be honest with you, it hasn't been fun. Our secretaries, Bill, the tech department have done a really nice job answering questions, helping families out and helping parents out, so I do wanna give kudos to them. If you're hearing complaints or things, please ask them to call our secretaries, we will help them. But it has been a little bit of a mess. With the online enrollments, we didn't get the numbers of people, families answering the surveys that we sent out like we had wanted to. So in the elementary level, we did send home a paper survey, and those students and families that we did not get a paper survey back from, or an online survey back from, we then gave phone calls and made phone calls to them. So we're fairly confident, very confident, I should say, in the numbers that you're seeing here because of the online, then the paper, and then the phone calls out, reaching out to families. The, I'm gonna pick one grade level, I'm gonna look at, let's pick second grade, look at second grade, and go line by line and explain to you what we have found through these surveys. In second grade, that first line, and they're the same by each grade level, Laurentian by boundary, these are the students who are identified as living in the boundaries of the Laurentian Elementary and are choosing to go to Laurentian next year, by grade level. Elementary and are choosing to go to Laurentian next year by grade level. The next line is Laurentian by choice. These are students that live with outside of the Laurentian boundary but are still choosing to go to Laurentian next year. Their families are choosing to transport them or at least get them to a bus stop that goes to Laurentian. Same thing with the Parkview. Parkview by boundary. Are those students living within the Parkview boundary or North Star boundaries when you get in the elementary? And then Parkview by choice. Students that are choosing to come to Parkview and/or North Star, like I said, if you get into an upper grade, their parents are either transporting them or they're getting them to a bus stop that gets to Parkview or North Star. Students that we have confirmed leaving for MIB, these are students that we have already records requests from. New enrollment, these are students that have newly enrolled to our district and are choosing Laurentian. And then new enrollment Parkview students that are new to our district and choosing Parkview. They are not currently within our buildings. They're starting next school year. So these are numbers that we don't currently have right now, but will be starting next year. And then moving without a place that we know, those numbers are marked there. As you see, when you go down, total Laurentian, that's when you add up all of the Laurentians, total Parkviews when you add up all the Parkviews, and then the grand total of how many students are in that grade level. If you look at the grand total, for example, first, second grade, it says 160. Right underneath that is the predicted. The predicted is what Spencer has given us, and I believe given you in one of the board meetings, using his formula, I believe it's 94%, Spencer, am I correct on that?
It's different for every.
Different for every grade level. But those are his predicted numbers for who's coming or who will be within our schools next fall. Every grade level, like I said, is different if you look there, but those are, we're very close to our predicted numbers in all of the grade levels. Below that, you'll see Laurentian sections. Those are what, as principals, we have gone through, marked out how many sections we're anticipating within each building. Laurentian is anticipating three in second grade. Parkview's anticipating five in second grade for a total of eight sections. Next to those numbers, you will see like 18.67 and 20.8. That's the number of students that will be, or that we're predicting in each classroom. Now, I understand we're not going to have .67 of a student in the classroom, but one classroom would have 18, one would have 19. But when we round those out, that's what you get. So that's what you will see for each grade level. I won't talk about each grade level here. Kindergarten, you don't see this because those numbers are just starting to come in. Parents are picking. The best I can do right now is tell you that we currently have 51 students enrolled for Laurentian kindergarten, and we currently have 71 students enrolled for Parkview kindergarten. We are in the process now of sending out a second letter and also calling families that we have not heard from. We get those numbers. Kindergarten, numbers from our early childhood programs, people that just choose to come to kindergarten here. So there's a lot of different areas that we're getting those numbers from and trying to reach out to those people. People move from census time until kindergarten time. Questions about these numbers?
If you wouldn't mind, since some of these families you've actually talked to, what was the reasoning behind leaving to go to MIB?
That's a great question, Freddie. And I actually, as a part, I'll speak for myself for Parkview. I did call every single family that has told us they were not coming back. I got multiple reasons. Of course, every family has their own reasoning for not coming back. Lots of reasons resulted in maybe a smaller setting, reasons for their families just choosing to move maybe to a different state. There may be some friends are moving or they have friends in an MIB or another situation. There was a couple instances where they were moving to a different school district, not far down the road, but they're in a different district now. And then I did hear just the uncertainty, the uncertainty of what's going on, the uncertainty of what's happening at board meetings and things like that. And I know I mentioned that, but it is concerning and I'll be honest, that's what I've heard.
And I appreciate the honesty because I think we need to be aware of that, too.
Yep.
Thank you.
That more than once, it wasn't just from one family.
Yeah, and on that same topic, so you have just MIB there. What about leaving for Marquette or St. Louis County? I know a lot of people in the past that wanted to go to the Cherry School, kind of close in proximity. What about the other ones?
The only reason we listed MIB here is because MIB is the only district currently that has done records requests to us.
Oh, records requests.
Yep. The other ones that, like if I had students moving and they told me where they were going, I did list that with their name. But the ones that I personally, for Parkview, have marked moving are moving like out of, far away, out of state.
Any other questions for Sheena?
So Sheena, I got a question. When you say Laurentian by boundary, Laurentian by choice, Parkview by boundary, Parkview by choice, when you talk about, like say, Parkview by boundary now, are you talking, you know, I mean, we have the Tower kids and the...
Parkview by boundary, the best way I describe it to parents is there's a line in Midway, and that bus doesn't cross that line.
Everything north.
It goes north.
Okay.
And then out to Bywabek.
Okay, and then, so all these kids are included are from the Tower area, the Cook area that are in that?
Everybody from that imaginary line in Midway, north.
All right, okay.
Yep.
All right.
And then Parkview by choice. Now, remember, when we see these by choices, we also have to consider size, and we have told every family, when you're choosing to go there, it's if there's room. You know, we're going to get into a little bit of a sticky situation if those numbers change, but they're not in their assigned boundary, I guess. Some of those people live in Midway and are choosing to come to Laurentian and things like that.
So it's accurate to say, though, that that imaginary line in Midway, some of those kids are actually closer to the Laurentian school in distance?
Those are the boundaries that the...
We've talked about it at the board level, but...
Yep. I'm just going by what you said.
I just wanted to make that clear.
Any other questions?
I have a question. You probably maybe don't even know this, but leaving at MIB, you have, I don't know how many students?
14 altogether.
How many families is that, you know? Or, no, I don't. I know of one that's, no, two families out of the Parkview that are brother, sister, or brother, brother. So, but I think the rest of mine were not siblings. And I don't know in the upper levels how many of those are families. Thank you.
Good. Any other question? Thank you, Sheena.
Thank you.
Thank you.
5.4 custodians by building for 2223.
Do you have those numbers, Noel?
I'll cover that with members of the board. The committee did talk about this, and this was just for the personnel committee. Did talk about these. These are no names attached. You have the numbers. These were Mike's recommendation on our total custodial staff next year, where they would go. So in the information you see, you see a number of custodians that he is recommending for each particular building for next year. And so that's what the board has. The personnel committee talked about it, and they recommended and suggested that the full board see this information. So that's what you have in front of you. You don't need to make a decision on it. It's just FYI to the board at this point in time.
And at the committee meeting, it was also recommended, since we didn't know the logistics of what Mike needed and everything, that we were just going to leave the placement of the janitorial staff and bus up to him. I mean, it wouldn't be like, it would be on his recommendations that he would make that decision of where people needed to go.
No, essentially, this is his recommendation, and our thoughts were to go with his recommendation and alter as needed as we move forward.
So on here, it says total custodians come to 20, but I add up 15. Day shift, oh, day shift and, there's 20. Then my other question was, in Laurentian, three afternoon custodians. There's a lot of square footage in that building. You divide the custodians into the square footage, and is that lot compared to VHS four afternoon custodians?
And Mike was clearly at the, I don't want to speak for Mike, but he was clearly hedging, and he said, let's just see how it goes. I want to see how it rolls out because generally, when you talk to consultants, they will recommend one custodian for 30,000 square feet. That's full-time custodians. However, we have a situation where many of our custodians drive a school bus, so they're not really working all the time in the building. So that's why Mike is saying, hey, let me experience this, let the custodians experience this, then I'll be able to nail it a little bit better as far as how it will work at Laurentian, for example.
And that was my next question or comment, is the bus driving duties take anywhere between one to three hours out of their maintenance time. And I have no idea, in Virginia, there are no custodian bus drivers at this time? They're either custodians or bus drivers?
There are, there are some custodians who, because we have to have them drive the bus because we're short drivers. So occasionally, and sometimes a custodian could end up driving a bus for a week or two at a time because they're having trouble with the driver. But you're correct. Generally speaking, in the old Virginia district, they were all hired as bus drivers or custodians. But most of the custodians understand they're going to drive.
So how often does that happen in Virginia? Like on a, just take an average?
Well, fortunately, we have the resident expert here.
I mean, is that cutting into their, is that cutting into their maintenance time, too, the bus drivers and the custodians in Virginia that are separate? They're not custodian bus drivers like on the Evelyn Gilbert side?
Most of the bus drivers in the Virginia area, over on the Virginia side, are part-time. They work at 2:00 and a 2:00, 2:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the afternoon, plus any extracurricular, plus any field trips, that type of thing. I have gotten really no response on any employment in that. So some of our, some of our custodians have now stepped in and have one, some of our day, one of our day shift custodians drives first in the morning, and same thing in the afternoon, same route, that type of thing. So it's kind of the same thing that they do in Evelyn.
So is that like overtime or overload, or do they get their full custodial pay and then they get more for driving the bus?
No, they would not be in an overtime situation.
Okay, but do they get, then they're getting more for driving a bus because it's something else above their part-time custodial, right? They're not going to drive the bus for nothing?
I'm custodians.
You don't have part-time custodians? That's the bus drivers?
Bob, what I think what she's asking is the pay for a bus driver and the pay for a custodian, full-time, the same?
They are not. The bus driver makes a little bit less than the custodian driver.
Okay, so the custodians are full-time, but then some of them are driving the bus just like over on...
Exactly. There's some custodians that do not, there's about four, maybe four, that do not have bus, school bus endorsements. The rest of them do.
Right.
So the custodians, without the endorsement, make a certain amount. The custodian drivers make a certain amount, and the part-time drivers make a certain amount.
Yeah, I understand that because that's how the Evelyn Gilbert has been operating. But then the custodians on the Virginia side, up to maybe this point or this year, or the last two years, they haven't had to cut into their custodial time to drive the bus. They've had their full custodial time. Now they have to take that time out of their custodial time to drive the bus, just like in Evelyn Gilbert?
It's, yes, it's like Evelyn Gilbert, what they're doing there, yes.
Okay.
That's Bob, how many days a week he drives the bus? Just about every day.
I see, um... Oh, is that against union rules or what?
Well, he doesn't have a driver. What's he going to do?
I don't know. I mean, I'm not in union.
Been a past practice for 20 years.
Well, whatever.
Okay, any other questions?
Just quickly, so the 20 custodians that we're talking about here, where does that compare to where we're at this year?
That is the number of custodians we have right now. That's the total number of custodians he, Mike, has right now and that we have in our district right now.
We're recommending stay at the same number even though we're...
He, Mike, at the committee meeting, he said, if there's a retirement and the board chooses not to replace a custodian, then they'll just move people around and reconfigure at that time.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with that, but that wasn't, I mean, the budget numbers that we had, we, the rough numbers, I believe, was to reduce one to two custodial staff.
And Director Solberg, we were hoping by this time we would have some retirements from this custodial staff. It just hasn't happened. However, we believe there will be some retirements coming up in the next six months or so.
Our other reductions have been a combination of retirements and terminations.
And at this time, based upon what I'm hearing the board say, I'm suggesting we hold off on that until the work-study session.
Sure. Thank you.
So not only are these account of our current total custodians, it's also like a building assignment list.
And on that topic, building assignments, in the Ask Me contract, there's a small part of the contract that says when a building opens, we will ask Ask Me employees if they wish to work there, and they could be considered for employment in that building. So we have sent that out, and so they were currently waiting for Ask Me employees to let us know if they want to work in the new Laurentian.
And that was my next question about employee input and/or requests. I know some of it's contractual. And how many times can, you know what, that's getting in the weeds. That's, I don't want to waste the time.
And Mike had said he's had conversations with custodians about these things, too.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. 5.5, 5.5 on superintendent.
A couple updates for the board. One, the Laurentian Open House went extremely well. We had about a couple hundred people. Many of you have probably seen the Facebook post, interview, and a great article about the Open House. Some of you, I see familiar faces, were there. We had a short program. We, people could tour the building on their own or they could follow a tour. Just so the board knows, it was very well received. We heard very few, if any, negative comments about the building. It all fall into the area, wow, I can't believe this, unbelievable, I want to go back to school. Very positive, so you had very positive public input at your Open House. So I just want to let the board know that. Any questions about the Open House? Second thing, just want to let the board about the political process. As you're going to hear it a little bit in regards to budgets, just want to update the board that we have, we, being Rock Ridge, have two major, we're involved in two major bills that did make it through the House, and now it's to the Senate. One of them involves taconite taxes. The other one involves sales tax. And will they work? I don't know. However, I will say this, all of the area politicians are supporting you and support, they are all supporting you. You have the best case, one of the best case stories for any district, municipality, anything as far as why we are asking for money. You bid the project correctly. You accurately bid all the buildings. This is way back in 2019. Went to the voters, two completely different votes. Both of them said yes. We're done with the first building on budget. The high school is only seven or eight, nine months away from being finished, maybe 10. I better say 10, Pat, because he's looking at me from the top. That building is on budget so far. It's the third one that's caused the board difficulty. And that is, as we all know, because of the extraordinary price increases that have resulted due to COVID. And this is because the budget was created in 2019, but we're holding off on construction until 2022. So there's been a three-year delay. So there's been a three-year delay that normally would not have been in there. Normally, you pass the bond, you start the construction fairly soon. This is an unusual case. You did everything right, and then we got caught from COVID. So will we have success? We have, anything we get is a plus. So I would be cautiously, slightly optimistic, but your politicians are doing an incredible work for you down at the Capitol. So I just want to update the board on that. We'll know in about a month or so whether we were successful.
Are we looking anywhere else for funding? Have you made any other calls?
Right now, those are our two best, Director Yuhan, to get the amount of money that we're talking about. Those are our two best options. We don't have another way to come anywhere close to that.
Any other question?
What about the bill about going back retroactive for consolidation money and including us?
That one is, the amount of money that could be garnered from that is small relative to what we're talking, but we're still hopeful something will happen.
Is that advancing?
But that one did.
Didn't make, didn't make the deadline?
But anything could happen at this stage.
Is that deadline passed of when these, these bills have to be?
Yep, from the House going, I don't.
Both ways.
Yeah, I don't.
So whatever's in the hopper now, any of those others might have been, okay.
Right.
But these two have survived.
They are still there. They have made it, yep. Your area politicians. In addition to that, I want to update the board on the building moves. We have a lot of building moves, teacher moves. We've talked quite a bit behind the scenes in the admin meetings. We believe everything is ready to go. We believe that we have the system worked out with boxes, with U-Hauls, with how we're going to move it, with custodians, with who's going in what room, who's leaving, who's coming. So we think we have a pretty good handle on it, but of course, it'll probably look like controlled chaos when it starts. But I think it should go fairly well, cross both my fingers. So I just want to give the board an update, and that's because of all the incredible hard work everyone has done ahead of time, anticipating scenarios and anticipating problems. So we are still on track for that. Any questions I have before I give you one more announcement?
I have a question. The students that are coming over to Franklin from the Roosevelt, are they getting a tour of the Franklin prior to the school year?
They've been there.
They've been there, all of them?
Yep, all of them have been there. Some of them have been there several times.
Okay.
Especially if they came, Roosevelt had held an open house at Franklin so that parents and kids could see the building in addition to the kids going over there. And then, and on the open house, about 25% of our kids and parents showed up. That's what teachers told me.
Okay, I had somebody reach out. If they, if there's individual kids that missed it due to illness or whatever, can those individual parents reach out to the building principal and try and get something arranged?
And I'll, Scott and I'll talk tomorrow about the same topic.
Okay.
To follow up on that, are we doing anything for the kids whose boundaries change? Make them feel a bit more welcome if they're, we're going to Parkview now, they're going to be at Laurentian? Are we doing anything to, to welcome them to their new, new students or building?
Yep, of the ones we know about, Director Yuhan, I know that Angie has taken the Franklin kids, for example, over to Laurentian. They've seen it, the Gilbert kids went over, who were going there, went over and saw that building. We've got most of them, many parents listening to this, and you did see it, just contact your building principal, and then we'll make sure they get over there and can see the building. Because that, we really want them to see the building before the fall.
Yeah, I was wondering about the ones that were, you know, maybe open and rolling to, or they don't live in that boundary anymore now they're coming back to Laurentian.
Yep, Director Yuhan, I have had parents contact me that have come in to visit the building, that are coming to Parkview too, so.
Okay.
Kind of to piggyback that, but the board, I think there had been some emails to the whole board, and then I've had some personal conversations with some parents who are concerned about transportation, this daycare thing. Either it's on the front end or it's on the back end, back end of the day, and they're kind of caught not, what are we doing to work on that problem?
That's exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, I think the rest of the board does too.
Because we've had, the principals have had multiple conversations with parents. We have the attendance boundary lines. So anyone who is moving within an attendance boundary, we're busing them. So for example, if you're doing daycare in Mountain Iron, and they have a child who's attending Parkview, we are busing those kids from Mountain Iron over to Parkview. We are not, however, because the board has set the attendance boundary, we are not busing those kids over to Laurentian. So if a parent really wants their child to attend a certain daycare, for whatever reason, they can do that, and we can take their child from that daycare to the elementary school that's within that boundary line. And the parent would then just have to pick up their child or carpool with some other parents to, we've had some parents do that. They've talked and they're doing carpooling to make it all.
Yeah, the problem comes in when they're not within the boundary line of where they live, and they can't find daycare in the boundary line, within the boundary line. That's why they have to go out of the boundary line. Now they're stuck either on the beginning, before school or after school with no transportation with their children. And it brings to me up the point, maybe the board should at least investigate or talk about, or maybe have in-house daycare. I know we don't like to get into the daycare business sometimes. Jeff, you've always kind of said we're not in the daycare business, but if it's a big enough problem for enough people, we should maybe at least talk about it. And we've got new buildings, we probably have some extra space, and I'm just throwing that out there.
Isn't there a daycare like right up here?
But that might be, you know?
There's, yeah, there's, I mean, there's daycare shortages all over the place, and people are having, before they even have their baby, they're trying to get on daycare lists. I mean, so I empathize with those people because it is difficult to find daycare, especially for infants and toddlers and, and you know, our school-age kids, you know, a lot of those daycares too. I mean, they're not there during the year, they're only there during the summer unless it's, you know, before school, after school.
And it's not.
It's just, there's so many different things, variables, but daycare is difficult to find.
It's daycare and after school, before school for the older ones. I'm saying, it's, it's a problem for some of these parents now. What, what are they going to do if they, you know, they can't get their kids picked up after school from a daycare outside of the boundary? And there's at least, say, half a dozen that have.
Am I assuming correct that if someone uses the Mountain Iron daycare and they're not, they're not from that boundary, but they bring their kids there in the morning, that we will pick them up and bring them back to, to school?
And that's the no part of it?
And then?
Oh, that's back to the school?
We'll take them to Parkview because that's.
Right, we'll take them to Parkview, and then at the end of the day, will we return them to the Tykes?
We could.
To, what was that?
Iron Range Tykes, yes.
Do we bring, do we bring children from Parkview to?
Right now, we pick up kids from Iron Range Tykes.
Yep.
As an example, in the morning, to Parkview.
Mm-hmm.
And then in the evening, we take them back.
But that's within the boundary?
Absolutely.
That's within the boundary?
No, if, what I'm, I asked was specifically if a parent brings their children there away from, not within that boundary, we will bring, we will accommodate where they send their kids for daycare, so.
That's not what I understand, so.
So, so, so if a person lives.
They live in the Laurentian boundary.
Right.
They live in the Parkview boundary.
If they live in the.
Yep.
No, what I asked is if some, well, if they can't get their kids to Tykes, then it's a problem.
Well, they can get them to Tykes, they just can't get them back, they can't get them to Laurentian.
That's right.
They live in Evelyn.
Right.
And they daycare in Mountain Iron. That's the problem.
That's the problem. That's one instance. There's another problem on the front end too, that I'm aware of, but, okay.
But what is currently happening right now is we are implementing the plan that the board adopted, and this is how the plan works. There, and there's numerous cases where it doesn't work for any one particular parent or a small group of parents. I empathize, I understand, I get it. And I don't even know if we even have a driver or a bus to go across attendance boundaries. And once you start that.
But it, it's happened in the past, because I know Evelyn Gilbert did that.
I just, I wonder.
So we didn't lose the kids. That's what happened, because we didn't lose them, so then we would have our Evelyn Gilbert buses bring kids after school to Virginia daycare, because otherwise, maybe we would have lost that student and that funding. So it's within our district.
How many it impacts?
I'd like to know that.
How many families it impacts?
Yeah, right, that's, you know, we don't want to lose any.
Is there any other question?
And the other question I had was the three days at the end of the school year for the certain teachers and certain grades for moving. What, what fund does that, that pay, those three days pay coming out of?
What funds the teachers working those three days?
Yeah.
Just the same fund that's funds teachers working the other days, the general fund.
Okay, because the other teachers that aren't doing that, at the end of the year, don't they have a, a day like Staff Development Day or some kind of, you know, work in your rooms and/or whatever without student contact, and that's staff?
They do, all the days are all fully paid for. Spencer has budgeted them all in there, so those three days aren't costing you any additional money.
Yeah, that wasn't my question, but so they are.
They're not saving any additional money.
No, they're general fund salary dollars. General fund salary dollars, they're not staff development dollars.
The Staff Development Day, that Spencer may take from the Staff Development Fund. But if they're not doing staff development, no, he's going to take the general fund.
And if they're, they're moving, that's not staff development money, only if it's staff development activities of those three days.
That would be a safe assumption, yes.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have one more thing. It's a good thing. You have a guest star in your midst here, Spencer Rani, who is sitting right back there and very, very happy now. He has been announced as the State of Minnesota School Business Officer of the Year, the only one in the state, so congratulations. You should be very proud of having Spencer as your business manager. You win the award based on how good of a job you've done with your district, running the books, managing the different finances, also going through any difficult tumultuous times, certainly which would include a consolidation of two school boards and the district. So again, kudos to Spencer Rani, School Business Manager of the Year. That's the last thing I wanted to share with the board.
Nice job, Spencer.
Good job, Spence.
It's a thankless job, so tonight you get a thank you. No raise, just recognition.
Item 6.1, consider approval of contract amendment number four with Kraus Anderson.
Given our discussion at our pre-meeting or working group, I would move approval of this.
We have a motion at, report by Tom. Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
I would, I would just hope the next time that Kraus Anderson does come forward with something like this, they present it in the way that they did at the working session, okay, from, from now on.
But in their defense, just like we don't always have the information on, like, we come up with questions as we go, and they don't expect, you know, they can't anticipate every question that we have.
Is there any other discussion? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We have eight ayes and Director Sorkin, no.
Thank you very much.
That's been your shortest meeting ever.
I don't even think you had to say anything.
Pressing up for it.
Robert Voss, consider approval of grant contract agreement between, for school bus stopfarms and signal cameras.
Simple background, somewhere around December, the State of Minnesota and Department of Public Safety made about $7.3 million available to school districts under a grant program for school bus stoparm cameras, which is a camera that is next to the stoparm to catch people running through stoparms. So I did apply for the grant with the help of Bill Bryson, Technology Department, and they awarded us $9,400 for the purchase of cameras and about $8,300 for installation costs. That was in December it's taken this long.
Do I see a matching? Do we have to match something?
We do not.
Very good. Is there a motion to accept the grant? A motion by Tom, Director Tomaro. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Colbert Dahl. Is there any more discussion?
Does, will that, will that take care of all of our buses then?
Should take care of all, all 30 minutes.
Okay, good, thanks.
Any other discussion?
When we sell a bus, can we remove that equipment?
Everything that we have on the bus is removed.
Perfect, thank you.
That's not an option you can add to a new order of bus.
You could, but it's more effective for us to put it in, and then we get what we want instead of a bus.
Very good. Any other discussion?
Who's going to take care of the, let's see, there are some requirements. We have to report numbers of violations, so our bus drivers have to keep track of?
Bus drivers do that, yes.
Those are always referred because they're prosecutable.
Okay, and number two, the number of citations issued. Bus drivers would what, call the highway department?
911.
Issue?
Call 911 and a law enforcement officer.
And they come and issue, okay.
And usually a complaint gets issued by the county attorney's office.
Okay, and then a summary, that's, is that extra work for our bus drivers then?
It, it really isn't. They, I've got a sheet that they report on, yes.
All right.
And now we'll have documentation. Very good. Any other questions?
I'm just actually curious, like, how often that happens, that there are those kind of violations.
Didn't you want to know?
It doesn't happen as much as you think, okay? It actually happens a lot down by your house.
My house?
Yes.
Oh, really?
Yes, and it doesn't happen quite as much as it used to, with the college and Blue Cross there, usually on Walt Avenue is where a lot of it happened.
Okay.
Every once in a while, on Highway 169, we don't generally let students cross Highway 169, but we do have to stop every once in a while, and there's been a few incidents there, so.
Yeah, I've seen it, I mean, actually not, but near my house I have seen. But, yeah.
It's a bigger.
I just was curious, just, yeah. Actually, I think it was by Pine Mill Court is, I think that's where I thought it happened, just myself. But yeah, I was just curious how often.
Yeah, not, not as much as you.
That's good, good.
Very good. No other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. 6.5, consider approval of a plan for existing trophies from Virginia and Evelyn Gilbert campuses. Josh Lampa and Chad, you're on call.
So we got a lot of trophies that we need to figure out what to do with. And proposing that any of the tennis trophies be given to the Virginia tennis courts, the indoors, from Evelyn to Virginia, to be displayed so the public can still see them. Same thing with any hockey trophies that we may still have, be given to the two arenas. We don't think we have many of those laying around now. And then, any state tournament trophies, we would like to offer those back to the communities. I contacted the Evelyn Community Foundation and the Mayor Gilbert. They were both very interested in having trophies from those communities given back to the city and the community foundation so that they could be displayed publicly. Carl from Gilbert said they have a trophy case already that's got it sparse, that they're ready to put stuff into as soon as we could get it to them. We would also like to give any trophies or awards that were given to a specific family, like the Kersey Award or the Malavich Award, back to those families. So they go directly back to them because they were given to that family for a Coach of the Year or Activities Director of the Year or whatever the case may be. We've got a couple more L-plaque in Evelyn that would be given back to those families.
Individuals that went to state too. Individuals that went to state on their own.
Individuals, state trophies. Individuals, state trophies. And then, anything left over would be available on a first-serve basis at the garage sales in Virginia for the Virginia trophies and the one in Gilbert for the Evolith Gilbert trophies.
And the Virginia golf course, I talked to them, we were going to talk to golfers, they would like the state golf trophies. They said they'd be happy to take those and display those, so.
And we'd offer the same thing to the Evolith golf course for that too, so they'd really accept that.
And then, pictures were going to be taken of each trophy for digitalization?
For the picture board. Touchscreen picture board in the new building.
And would it, if it's a touchscreen, would it give information about that?
Yeah, somebody's just got to upload all that information in there. A lot of schools have that, so you click on 1977 and a team and all the information's there, but somebody's just got to put all that information in there.
There'd be a cost to that digitalization, won't there be? Is that expensive or not?
I don't know the exact cost of those screens, I thought they were already in the plan, am I wrong?
The screen itself is, but the software is to be determined.
The screen, but to digitize them or to do the 3D whatever?
There's somebody taking a picture of it.
Picture, yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't we have a teacher that was doing some of that?
We thought we did, but I think that got done.
Okay, so will that be an extra cost to us or not, other than the screen?
Finding somebody to do it.
Okay. You can take a picture and then you can take a good picture too, so.
Right.
Especially for, like, a 3D thing. And then, we had a group that we've already given some Evolith memorabilia to, was at the Evolith Foundation, and so I understand that they asked for the trophies a while back, but now the recommendation is to put them in a garage sale. Now, they expressed interest in, you know, displaying them like the other stuff that they've already acquired from us, so I'm not sure that I will agree with a garage sale for those trophies. If we've got a group that's got an organized thing and a place for more community-wide, public-wide contribution, I don't know about Virginia, I'm just speaking about that with Gilbert trophies now, so. I would like to see them asked, because they've already inquired and reconsidered that one.
We weren't aware of exactly what the Evolith Community Foundation was asked for, but if they want trophies, we'll give them trophies.
Okay.
We're talking whatever's for the remainder, we'll put in the garage sales.
Whatever they.
Whatever the carriers want, we'd love to give them all of them.
Okay, because I understand they've already asked for those trophies before any of this.
We'll give them whatever they want, as long as it's going to be displayed somewhere where people can see it.
Yeah, so somebody, is somebody going to be responsible for contacting them? Because the last board, couple of board packets, we had a bunch of pictures, things that we've donated to them already.
Well, I've already contacted the Evolith Community Foundation. They're going to be giving back to me sometime soon. I talked to them at the Albert Mills at Laurentian.
Okay, I think those are the people, yeah.
So they'll be contacting me about the Evolith Gilbert trophies.
Okay.
So are you going to separate, you know, I'm just, I'm a, you know, graduated Gilbert Buccaneer, are you going to separate the preconsolidation trophies, like, from 19, I don't know when they consolidated?
Yep.
Because people have asked me about trophies from the 80s.
Like the 1951 Gilbert basketball trophy, that'll go to Gilbert.
Okay.
Yeah, that should, for sure.
Yeah, those type of things will go to the prospective communities.
So you're going to separate the Gilbert Buccaneer stuff, preconsolidation for those people?
Do I hear you volunteering to help?
I would, I would, I would. I would volunteer because I have a lot of people ask me about what they're going to do with the trophies. There's a lot of chatter, I hate to say it on social media because everything's true, you know, they're talking about just throwing everything away and it's not true.
Well, I'd like to take you on board, Bill.
Yeah, I would be glad to. I'd be glad to represent the city, in the city of Gilbert.
When I talked to Mayor Obasar, he said, "We'll take any Gilbert trophies that you want to give us."
Wouldn't they already be separated? I mean, there's no Gilbert trophies brought to Evolith in 86 when we consolidated.
No, but there's Evolith Gilbert trophies combined in Gilbert. Okay, you know what I'm saying? That would probably need to be, I mean, people are asking me specifically for, yeah, Gilbert Buccaneer stuff.
Most of that stuff is still in the Gilbert.
That's what I was thinking, that's what I was saying.
And the other thing, I think there's concern out there, I haven't seen stuff on social media about that in particular, but as I understand, when St. Louis County schools built their new buildings, those trophies didn't go anywhere with anything. I think they stayed in the old building up in Cook, and so I don't think people had a chance to have anything to say or to even receive those trophies. And I think people are remembering that, and they probably don't want the same thing to happen here, so there's that concern out there too.
Not our intention.
I didn't say it was your intention, but that's, you know, when you get gun shy because something has happened in the past, they're maybe more concerned about it now.
Very good.
Do we need a motion to?
Yes.
This, so moved.
We have a motion by Matt, and who's the second?
Stacy.
With inclusion of the discussion about, you know, not necessarily going to the garage sale for the EG trophies?
They already said that.
I mean, well, but it's written this way. I just wanted to clarify that with a further discussion, it won't be exactly how it's on this paper. Okay, understood? That's fine if it's understood.
Correct.
And Bill volunteered to help them, so we're in good hands.
I'll help you, Bill too, on our side, yeah, I will.
Any other discussion? Opposed and favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
6.6, consider request to use SR funds on counseling social workers and nursing services.
You get me again, members of the school board. What you have in front of you is, we did talk about this at the Personnel Committee. Spencer has shown you these numbers before, but there are some additions to them, and they are in blue. And what we are doing is that we had a survey among community students, not all of them, parents, staff members, well, not a survey, and they told us how they thought the SR funds should be spent. And I showed that to the board on what this community survey said in the total. And so, that gives us you a pretty good idea of where the community feels some of the SR funds should be spent. So what you have in front of you is, I am asking you for consideration for us to post two counselors or social workers, and I'm saying two counselors or social workers, so that gives us the leeway based upon whether whoever we run into, so we have the leeway to hire the best person. Maybe it's a social worker or maybe it's a counselor, I don't know. So the leeway to hire two, we would hire them, they would be good hired for three years. The names and the specific names of who they are would be brought back to the board for your approval, and I'm not going to talk about the hiring process because we're clearly going to talk about that at an upcoming school board work-study session. So all I'm asking for is permission to post for two social workers or two counselors using SR funds, and then in addition to that, nursing services. Because of COVID and everything else, we do have more stress on our nursing services. So in discussions with Misty, she is our school nurse, we have only one school nurse in the district, we have to have one, so she is asking for 20 hours of LPN services plus seven hours of RN services that we would post. These are two different deals, they're not combined together. So it's 20 hours LPN, seven hours of additional RN services. So I'm asking the board for permission to also post for those hours also, and those would be paid for from the SR funds. And it's important for us to realize that 20% of the total SR funds that we receive, we have rules on how we're supposed to spend them, so we do need to spend some of the SR funds on certain activities. And so I'm asking for permission for us to post, not hire, only to post, two social workers or two counselors, and then 20 hours of LPN, and then seven hours of RN time.
I have a question, and just looking at the spreadsheet, just an example, new hire counselor, social worker, $80,000 in '22, '23, and then it's the same in '23, '24, I assume that's the same position, it's not adding another one?
No, it is the same position, these are just approximations of the document.
Yeah, and all in, and I get all that, because, you know, when I look at the bus line, and we approved the four buses, but there's also four buses in '22, excuse me, '23, '24, I assume that would come back to the board and that's just what we're projecting?
Correct.
We haven't, okay.
You have not authorized us to purchase an additional bus.
Eight, right, okay, all right.
I will make a motion to approve the counselors slash social workers as well as the additional nursing hours.
We have a motion by Stacy, support by Director Tom. Is there any more discussion?
I just, sorry, I just, you know, we discussed this too in the Personnel Committee, and I did throw out there the idea of potentially, and I want to bring it up here too, about potentially having a paid intern for a school counselor position. It would be cheaper for us, and it also would provide an opportunity for somebody that we currently have in our district that could possibly fall into that category. It's just, it's an option. It would be, you know, it would save some money and.
The other part of that is, we might have somebody in the district, but we have to put it out for everybody.
Right.
I can see a savings there. My question, as you said it's for three years, but we only have two years worth, two years worth of expenses here.
Correct, but the SR funds need, you have three years to spend the funds, we just went out two years.
Okay, three years to spend, but I thought you were recommending these positions for three years.
I am.
So that's been?
What you have in front of you, it just goes out two years.
Okay, so what?
It doesn't go out to the third year, but yes, there would be a third column with third-year expenses also.
Have not been either approved or asked for yet, the third year?
No, but I'm, that's why I'm only asking to post.
Okay.
That'd be part of the budget process.
That's the other reason why I was suggesting a paid internship, you know, potentially, is because of that, because it's not a long, possibly not a long-term thing, but also because, you know, we would be investing in the people that we currently have employed within our district as well.
We do have.
Mental health services for children is where I want to cut savings, and I realize that I will be long gone off this board by the time the third year rolls around, but having sat with Paula Larson, who's a school counselor, for over an hour and hearing about the things, the traumas that they've been dealing with in light of COVID, I wish we could offer more support for our counselors. I wish we could offer more than two social workers or counselors for our kids. We are a district that has, we'll have three elementaries and a high school, and we are woefully understaffed for counselors. So at this point, we're not talking about paid interns, we're talking about posting only for social worker positions as well as nursing positions.
And I 100% agree, I mean, obviously, but what I'm saying is, we would have a person in that role.
That's a premature discussion, that's not what we're talking about right now.
We'd have somebody in that role and we'd be investing in our current employees. So that's all I'm saying, just throwing it out there. I brought it up at the Personnel Committee, so I'm bringing it up here too.
Very good.
Do you have a spot where, or an idea where these would be, what buildings these new hires would be in?
As far as where they would go?
Yeah.
Because of principles, we've talked about this, and we want to put a counselor in every building, these two hires, for right now, our recommendation would be, one of them would probably go to Laurentian Elementary and the other one would go in the high school. But we're trying to split the current counselor so that there's one in each building, that's not necessarily true right now. So because of how things are broken out, and I don't want to talk names right now, but that would be where we would probably look to place one of them, and then the other would be at the, more at the high school level.
What about the nursing services? Would that be similar, like, how would you, if you have 20 hours LPN, like, would they be going to different schools based on need or?
They would go based on need, because it depends, sometimes we don't know where our high medical need kids are coming from, and so Misty would simply put those individuals or those hours where the areas of greatest need would be, and then shuffle people around from there.
So that would be another position, a 20-hour-a-week LPN.
Not necessarily some of those, but that's a part-time.
Okay, but that's what I'm asking, so would, could some, 20 hours be added to somebody we already have to make a full-time person?
That's, we would have to find out, if you say post it, who's interested in the job, and then we kind of go from there and see, are they currently working with us, do they have some hours with us, but hypothetically, yes, that could happen.
Happen, and then when they turn from part-time to full-time, that's a bigger expense too with benefits, and so, but on the other hand, I was always supportive filling people out, you know, it's part-time people out to full-time. But then, the seven hour, you must be thinking of adding seven hours of RN, because who's going to come in for seven hours a week for $9,000 and, you know, disrupt their whole life and their whole day and their whole week? So are you also adding that to somebody existing in your mind?
There is a specific person who could take it, however, we have to post the position because it's additional and because of the ASMR contract, we need to post to see if anyone out there is interested in the hours.
I know, that's just the perfunctory part of it, but.
Right, we have to do it.
Okay, I know we have to do it, but I'm just saying, you know, if people kind of realize that they're, say, "I'm not going to even waste my time applying or interviewing because, because they've got this idea already of what they want to do, maybe add hours to somebody already existing," so that happens all the time.
People have kids in school and a part-time job, like, that's perfect.
I know, but seven hours is pretty disruptive.
Talk about hypothetical.
Is there any other discussion?
I'm not done yet, please, and then, I, personally, I would rather use this, use this SR money for class reduction, academics, smaller class sizes, more teachers, we've cut teachers at, what, 11, 12, or more?
SR money for teachers.
Yes, we can, we can for reducing class size, for extra help, for academic failure. I just heard on the news today, the kids who went online, 50% learning they think they lost, and the ones that did come to school because of COVID, they lost at least 20% of learning or whatever. I'm saying academics first and, and look at, look at the.
I guess my risk would be mental health first, and then kids can get on the academic.
I would think that if they do.
If suffering from depression, suicide rates are up, we need this for our kids.
You're real good at interrupting, but I'm.
You know, Ms. Parkin, I understand what you're saying. We're utilizing some of the SR funds for teachers as it.
I know, and I think we.
Go forward.
I personally would rather to use more for the academic side of it, so now there's a social worker and/or a counselor or two, and then the other.
Dr. Riden, can I call the question?
We've all, listen, that's very, you're disregarding, with the code of ethics, you're not letting everybody have their input and ask the questions that they need.
Paulie, just get to your point, please, thank you.
If I wasn't interrupted.
Paulie, go ahead.
Thank you, I have the floor, Stacy. Thank you. All right, you know, many times we talk about people who, this is like a two-year thing, and we are wanting it for the three years. Is it fair, I think Brandy even in other board meetings for other positions, geez, is it fair? And should we just, you know, ask for somebody for two years? Well, maybe somebody would want just two years, but that's, it's kind of like, well, we don't know if we're going to have you, what kind of applicants are we going to get? Or is it fair to that principle for two years?
Can you?
Yes.
You have the floor, make a point, please, Reverend.
That's my point, we've used that rationale before, and in this situation, the situation is the same.
Is it filibuster at a board meeting?
No.
Sounds like it.
Let's keep. No further discussion. All those in favor signify.
No, we have additional money here, I wanted to know what the $28,000 for additional money is, you didn't address that, and it's in blue because it was added. What is that for, the added $28,000?
That's the cost, anticipated ballpark cost of the LPN hours and the RN hours.
Okay, but you.
As you already saw, the worksheet that Spencer showed you that had the approximate cost for the social worker or counselor in there.
Okay.
So this one has those additional hours, that's where that $28,000 came from.
Okay, so that's on top of the $19,000 and the $9,000, then there's another $28,000 for those two?
19 plus 9.
Yeah, 19 plus 9.
It's 28.
Oh, you just added those up, and it's not another $28,000 for something, because you just have additional there.
That's why I put that in the sheet.
Okay, all right, so that's, it's like a double number in there. All right, that's fine, that's all I have.
To piggyback off of what Stacy said, I mean, kids struggle to focus on academics if they're dealing with mental health issues, so, and it says right here that there's summer school options before and after school. And it says right here that there's summer school options, before and after-school tutor options that are being looked at, so there's money going into academics as well.
Great utilization of the SR dollars.
I agree.
Was this already asked for, the SR dollars? Have we already requested this and put this in our request for those SR dollars?
You passed the budget as a board using $1 million in SR funds. So the answer to your question would be yes.
Okay, so we've already requested of whomever we have to request them for, for these particular things? The social worker, okay.
Got the two things in there specifically, but we put in a plan to the state. Spencer has to put in a plan and that was part of our possibility for this School Board.
Okay, so he did write that, you, we did write that into our plan?
We did write that into your plan. In addition to that, the state of Minnesota also has a way to amend the original district plan to spend COVID dollars. And I do not believe you will need to do that.
That's why he got a fancy plaque.
Very good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Our next regular meeting is Monday, May 23 at 6:00 PM. Off Ridge, the question I have, would we like to do a working session next Monday?
I will be at a band concert.
We have a meeting on Monday at 3:30?
Yep.
We do.
Well, not confirmed, I guess.
No. What I'll do is I'll have Noel send out a.
Perfect.
Send out an email and we can, with several dates, and we'll work from there. At this time, I would like to ask for adjournment.
I will make a motion.
We have a question by Brandy, second by Tom. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I would like to.